Almost everybody's in.
Good evening, everyone. We are on the air. I'd like to call the city council meeting to order. May I have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Elliott.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Henry.
Here.
Mayor Gotel.
Here.
Councilmember Sandal is absent this evening.
And Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to excuse Councilmember Sandal for this.
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? She's excused. We have one person for the open forum and I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time. It's Millen. Sarah, okay, would you please come up? You have about three minutes to make a comment. Thank you for coming. Sign in and when you speak, state your name and your address. Oh, I have to come up?
Nope, we got a few more.
Maybe we'll wait for that one.
Hi, Stephanie Miller, 6804 James Avenue South in Richfield. Some of you may remember me from a few years ago when we were talking about the apartment buildings that were up for proposal. I want to just register in my first concerns about the land sale for Holy Angels. I know we just got out of the planning session. I have three kids, two graduated, one is a senior this year. I just think that there's concerns about the plan, the overall message getting out, and we don't seem to be having the transparency that has been alluded to when questions have been brought forward to the administration. And so I'd really like to just ask, I know that the process worked really well a few years ago, and I'm just asking here tonight that you allow the same kind of due diligence and thoughtful, you know, way you progressed through that whole apartment scenario and the development scenario. You let the process bear out the answer as opposed to there was times that you were being asked to rush to a decision both, on both sides. So I'm just asking that, you know, whether for or against that you allow the process to work through it as well.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming. Councilmembers, we have approximately one, two, three, four, five, six cards for the open forum on Logan Avenue, which is an agenda item. We can wait and ask for public comment at the time of the agenda item or we can hear the open forum on the agenda item. It's our choice.
Can we ask for public comment if it's not an open meeting?
Yes, we can ask for public comment, not a public hearing. That's different.
Okay. I'd suggest that so we can forward other things.
So if that's okay, then we would take public comment at this. So I have all your cards. I'll make sure you all get called up and you can come speak or we can move on with the agenda. Thank you. Because I know you'll stay anyway for the agenda item. Besides, we have some wonderful presentation. It's lovely to see you here. So I'll ask all of you to please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Actually, tonight, we have some actually really wonderful presentations. First, I'd like to call Jim Toppensoffer up here for recognition of a citizen at the ICE Arena staff was involved in a successful CPR resuscitation.
You've heard me come before you many times talking about how critical citizen CPR is in a number of the things and initiatives that we've done in Richfield and throughout the southwest metro to improve citizen CPR. Tonight, we're here to celebrate a survival, a save of Scott Rodriguez. Scott was playing hockey at the ICE Arena in September with some buddies. He's been playing there with his friends for almost 20 years, and he suffered a sudden cardiac arrest. At that moment, three of his teammates came to his immediate aid. Roger Gilbert, Robert Mueller, and Tom Briggel rolled him over and began CPR. One of them went and got two of the ICE Arena employees, Al Moore and Gary Piram, and they brought out an automatic external defibrillator, and that was applied to Mr. Rodriguez. A shock was delivered and a pulse was regained. Richfield firefighters and EMTs arrived, Hennepin County paramedics arrived, and he was transported down to HCMCE Medical Center where he underwent catheterization, and he's here today to say thank you to everyone who worked together to save his life. And I can't emphasize enough how important citizen and bystander CPR is to cardiac survival. Dr. Mahoney from HCMCEMS, who's here tonight, was telling us before the meeting that bystander AED application increases survival almost 100%. He said seven out of nine cardiac arrests in the area that where a bystander put an AED on an individual turned out positive. So with that, I'd like to have Al, Gary, come on up. You can stand right over here. Robert, Roger, and Tom, please come forward. Each of these individuals are receiving a certificate of recognition from the Richfield Fire Department along with the American Heart Association Heart Saver Hero Award.
Chief, before you sit down, you know, you stressed how important it is. How would somebody find a class?
They can contact the fire department. We have firefighters that'll go out and teach them hands-only CPR. Hands-only CPR, you don't have to, it takes five minutes. Seriously, it takes five minutes to learn how to save someone's life. And it's an amazing, amazing thing. We don't get into all of the long, drawn-out CPR classes as much anymore. If you need that for your profession, we do that. But if you just need hands-only CPR, let us know and we'll be more than happy to come out and teach it to you.
And don't you just have some classes in generals from time to time?
Yeah, we do run classes at time to time, especially during large city events.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for being here. We're glad you're here, kids. Clap again. That's a great thing. It's a great thing.
Did we approve the minutes?
No, we'll do that next. Yeah, I guess I need to go back. We'll let the crowd clear out here for just a second, but I'll ask the council approval of the minutes of the special city council meeting on November 12, 2013, the special city council work session of November 12, 2013, the regular city council meeting of November 12, 2013, and the special city council closed executive session of November 18, 2013.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye, approved. Thank you. Next, we have the annual meeting of the Community Service Commission. Jerry Charnitz, thank you for coming tonight and giving us an update.
Thank you for having me. We had another busy year again this year, as usual, and I'm happy to come and report again on our activities. Several of the activities that we did this year were that we appointed members to a community bandshell committee and received regular reports from them regarding the scope, feasibility, and location of a proposed bandshell. And we also assisted them in gathering information regarding a potential site by conducting surveys at the concerts at the various sites this summer. And we did also hold a Vets Park Neighborhood Meeting in December of last year. We provided guidance to the staff regarding the feasibility of relocating the Richfield community gardens from the airport site. We considered but did not pass a motion to recommend the preparation of a request for proposal to submit to Richfield Waste Haulers to proceed towards an organized waste hauling program. We approved the adoption of Sturgis Parliamentary Procedures. Brings us in line with the City Council and Planning Commission as the governing rules for our group, but reaffirmed our bylaw concerning passage of motion requiring a single, or a simple majority. We recommended approval of the adoption of the Healthy Foods Concession Policy for the city's concession stand. We provided feedback regarding the ICE Arena's expansion proposals and hosting of the Minnesota Magicians. We approved revisions to the city's athletic facility use policy and B schedule. We recommended approval of the city engineers' proposed Millen overlay project. We received reports from the Three Rivers Park District Nine Mile Creek Bike Plan Draft, the Bicycle Alliance of Minnesota's Bike Friendly Assessment of Richfield, and the Cornerstone Developments Group Plans for Lindale Gardens Redevelopment. We evaluated and prioritized the proposed capital projects and recommended approval of the annual capital improvement plan. We provided feedback to the staff regarding the procedure of issuing event permits for the use of parks and streets. We discussed the city's open water access ordinances in response to a resident's request to do so, and we appointed new and returning members to the Friends of Wood Lake Board. As usual, the CSC appointed liaisons to and received regular reports from the following groups: Planning Commission, Arts Commission, Cross Town Gateway Design Task Force, Friends of Wood Lake Board, and the Transportation Commission, and the Honoring All Veterans Memorial. Is there any questions?
Questions? It sounds like you guys were really, really busy.
Well, we usually are fairly busy, yeah.
You have a lot of great input into a lot of the other commissions. We see you there and it filters through, so that's very important. I think you're one of the best kept secrets in serving on a commission.
Madam Mayor, I just want to say that, you know, I'm a liaison to the commission, and it's really great to see the way that, you know, Jim brings forth, you know, the issues and, you know, when you have to decide when you're talking about the budget. You know, it's really a good discussion, and the priorities that they set are, you know, they really get into it, so it's just not, okay, we're rubber stamped this or that or the other. They're very much part of the process, and I've really appreciated Jerry's leadership because he always brings things back to, you know, well, this is what we're discussing and let's take care of business. So you guys do a beautiful job. Thank you.
Thanks, yes. We have a very good group. A lot of good feedback, a lot of good input.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. The next is the annual meeting with the Transportation Commission, and I believe Marty, you're going to be up here. Marty Kirsch.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Marty Kirsch, 6725 Penn Avenue South, Chair of the Transportation Commission. We had a busy year as we always do because roads and streets will always impact the city of Richfield probably from now until the end of time, where we're situated and all of the streets that we do have in the city. We reviewed projects, plans, and recommendations and gave municipal consent for the recent completed I-494 corridor improvement projects, which included the reconstruction of Zerxes Avenue Bridge and the westbound Exel Re Lane. We monitored the East 76th Street Reconstruction Project and the Richfield Parkway Connection Project progress and transportation impact. Provided Impact held a public open hearing and gave recommendations for final approval of the Richfield Bike Master Plan. The Commission also recommended approval of the Richfield Bike Advocate Liaison Position on the Transportation Commission. Both of these actions factored heavily into the city being awarded the Bronze Level Bike Friendship Friendly Community Designation by the League of American Bicyclists. Received, reviewed, and recommended the support of both the In-N-Out City Regional Trail Master Plan and the Nine Mile Creek Regional Track Master Plan. Met with representatives from transportation-related services such as Metro Transit, Our Car, and ICE Ride to the first expansion plans and the impact to Richfield, led the county road reconstruction plan process to date, including the following: Finalizing creation of the city's Guiding Principles Document to aid in virtue road discussions. Posted an open house on 66th Street and Portland Avenue to gather feedback from the public on perceived possible and negative existing conditions for both roadway so that they may be addressed in preliminary design. And as you know, 76th, or 66th Street, Penn Avenue, Lindale, Portland, are all at some point in the next 10, 15 years going to be redone, and so it's going to be a huge impact on the residents of Richfield and the immediate area, and so we need to, and this is our opportunity in working with Hennepin County to be able to put some input from the city of Richfield how we would like those various streets in their final design. Without Richfield's input, the county probably has a master plan, and that's the way it would be, but they're willing to work with us and we're giving them some good ideas on what we'd like to see, and we'll continue to have open houses. And we've got some things coming up December 4th for the public to be involved with, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Questions, comments, please?
That question, I would, much like Edwina did with the other commission, is I want to thank Marty and the members of his commission for being so responsive to some of the concerns that I've passed on to him from constituents. Some new residents with relatively young children being concerned about the speed of the traffic on Humboldt Avenue. Some of the concerns on people on 69th and 70th Street between Penn and the Edina border. And every concern that's been brought to me, I've passed on to Marty and his commission, and they've, if they haven't, if they don't have an answer, they contact the constituent, they talk to them, they explain what their role is in the community and tell them what they can and cannot do in terms of addressing those concerns. And I think that epitomizes what the commissions are for, and I really appreciate Marty being receptive when I pass on these calls and taking action immediately and talking to the constituency because I think it gives the citizens a sense that if they talk to me or anybody else on the council, we have these wonderful citizens serving on the commissions that we can pass it on to and we'll address it and get back with them. So there's a communication up and down the line that makes them know they're being heard, and if there's not an answer, at least we can explain what we can and cannot do. And I think that is, really represents the devotion that members of all the commissions have to doing their duty and serving the citizens on a volunteer basis, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, and you know, as we're coming up on reapplications for the commissions and everything like this, I think it's nice to know that, how well thought of our commissions are here.
Absolutely.
And the annual reports and all the work, I mean, you hear the list that these folks are reading off. It's a lot of work, and we really thank you. I mean, and it's one night a month. It's not as much as you think, but you guys get through a lot. I mean, you do a lot, and you go to the open houses, and I see a lot of you there, so thank you for the time you put in.
Well, and we're blessed that we have good staff people to help us out. So that's always important, the commission, that we have good quality staff members.
You're telling us it's a community effort, right?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service. Thank you. Next, we have council discussion, and a couple items I'll bring up right away is some scheduling things that we need to get on. We need to schedule the annual city council staff goal-setting session. And I heard that they're going to churn it up a little bit and make it a little funner and more interactive this next year. A bunch of politicians in the room. I don't know how you do that. But schedule a meeting with our local legislators. I know that we have done a breakfast meeting, and Linda Slocombe says that that works off very well, and we need to try to look, you need to try to look at your calendars. We're going to have to start putting some dates down of what's going to work and what's not going to work. Pat, I know you sometimes have to travel. I have to travel, and so when we're in and out of town. And Councilmember Sandal is gone tonight because we have to travel. And then we have to schedule advisory commission interviews, and I know that we do some in the evenings, and we try to do it Saturday, and in the winter, that works out fairly well for most council members. And people can come in through the day on a Saturday to interview, and then we take a few in some of the, before some of our council meetings when they can't come. So please look at your calendars. We're going to have to start getting these together and scheduling these.
You know, Madam Mayor, the legislature doesn't go into session until February.
Yeah.
So it's later than usual.
Yeah, but we want to have our agenda items, I guess, ready. It'd be a nice time to circle back around and talk about some of the big initiatives we're working on here in the city and see what they're working on, too, that might be helping us. So you're right, they don't come until February, so. But we'll be thinking, is it, everybody okay? You think a breakfast meeting again? Is everybody all right with that? They like that.
We like it. I think it's a very easy way to connect.
Okay, so we can do that. I think that would probably be one of the easiest ones to schedule, I think, getting the goal-setting session. Are we thinking like two-thirds of a day again, or what do we think?
Yeah, something like that, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I, it would be nice if we could, I'm just thinking that except for the first Friday in January, I think one of the other Fridays in January, if possible, would be a time where we could do it. It'd be a great day. Start in the morning and probably go till 1:00 or something like that, if we could.
And if we're doing that, we might want to just schedule, when will, we have, when will we be ready to interview for the commissions? What's our closing date?
I think, Cheryl, December 13th.
December 13th, okay. So anytime in January would be fine, too, for that a Saturday.
Yeah.
So we might want to book them together. We want to get everything done. So, okay, I'm counting on council, and we'll get hounded by staff if we don't send some dates.
Right.
In case whoever Sandal's not here, so. We'll start with some hot, soft hometown hits. Tom, I know that you've got some things to talk to us about the NOCs.
I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We just had our kind of cleanup for the NOC. And for those that don't know what NOC means, it's the Noise Oversight Committee, which I'm a member on, and it really deals with the airport noise. We had a busy year. We didn't get the relief we expected from the 2010 change that happened that kind of puts more flights over Richfield because of the RNAV situation where people didn't understand RNAV. And to confuse you more, they're also using another term, which you're hearing, PBN, Performance-Based Navigation, so.
Another acronym.
They throw more acronyms at you than, you know, your head's going all over the place. But we did look at the actual noise contour and amend the Amendment 1 to the mitigation ability, edgeability. So we re, I guess, did that so that we still have the option of getting homes mitigated. We looked at the scheduled nighttime operations just to see, because we were getting complaints about early morning, late-night flights, what's happening with that. We reviewed the fleet trend mixes at MSP. There's a lot of rumors going out there that they sent us the old DC9s and that. There was one operation last month. The truth is, Delta's been a pretty good change. They've come with an upgraded fleet. They continue to upgrade their fleet. They're moving away from the, what we call, regional jets, going to more of the Airbus 319s, which means more people, less runs, quieter aircraft, and they're already looking at purchases for newer, quieter aircraft because the newer ones are more fuel-efficient. So that's good news. Also looking, last year, we did vote Edina on as a community at large. I think that was a good move on the part, we actually were the ones that kind of recommended it, mainly because Edina wanted a voice in the community, and they weren't touching the airport, so they were voted in as an at-large member. They did check all the runs, and it's interesting now that the North Flow operations off of Minneapolis, which is usually the ones, if you look at runways, 3-0 left, 3-0 right, the North Flow end up being 63% of the total operations, so way more than half. Part of that's due to, we got a prevailing wind that comes out of the northwest and that runway gets more planes out of the area. We did studies for 3-0 right, 3-0 left, and the first time they've ever done it is looked at the altitude they were at, and this was due to the complaint from Edina, and the density of where they are in one location. So we got a map that was quite interesting, and with the new aircraft, you're finding out that their performance is going to be better or near the same. So now we're getting, you know, a hole in the sky like that that they're penetrating, which is a lot tighter. Some of the new things we're going to do next year, we're going to look at the nighttime analysis. We've asked them to look at the runway use study. What makes them choose which runways they use? And not to really go on efficiency, more on, you know, safety and keeping the noise out of the neighborhoods. A lot of times, when they get against the wall, they do it for efficiency more than they do for, you know, mitigating noise. And we are really going to be looking at the next gen of air traffic control. That's going to be RNAV stuff. We're looking at what they're implementing in Atlanta and some of the other cities and see, if that's good, we'd like to get back into the queue. We were in the queue, meaning being looked at and looked at departures and that, that would greatly help Richfield because instead of a plane going up and turning a heading that a controller gives them, they would be following a track on the ground. When you give them a heading in the air, if the wind's too strong, they could end up at 66th Street or even south of that, the wind blows themselves. If we do what they call the superhighway, the RNAV, they'll be tracking, each aircraft will track down the same route. How's that good for Richfield? We planned for it. We've zoned for it. We told our people, we're going to watch these areas. We're not going to build houses there, and we're going to send them over previously mitigated areas. So we're going to kind of stick to that, and then they're going to look at the MACDOMs, and that's a fancy word for how the airport really gets the information that we get, and is it accurate? Are the formulas right? And in that participation, we're going to have city representatives, which I'm going to be asked to be on, so we can really see if those little sound meters are really presenting what we think we hear. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. It'll be another busy year.
Yeah, it sounds like it, yeah. Yeah, it sounds like it, yeah. Yeah. Councilmember Garcia?
Well, I, I really don't have anything prepared, but I, I do wanna say that I've, you know, we just had a meeting with Holy Angels constituency, and, and they did a, and Holy Angels administrators did a presentation. And it is just, it feels good to make, when you have a group of concerned citizens there. Because, you know, they're, they really take part in, in participating in the life of their community. And, and I've, and just like, we've gotten a lot of emails and phone calls about an item that's gonna be on the agenda later on tonight. That, that's really necessary for us to make decisions that are informed and, and that really affect your daily lives. So please, you know, get, write us an email or give us a call. We really need every citizen to participate. So hats off to those, those of you that do participate. And also hats off to all, everybody that's a member of all our commissions.
Councilmember Elliott?
Well said, Edwina. And I have nothing this evening either, Your Honor.
Well, I just wanna make a pitch for commissions, though. We, we're looking for applicants. There's gonna be a lot of openings, because certain people will term out. They can only serve three terms, and then those commissions are open up. And some of the highly sought-after ones, I'm sure there'll be a few openings. But there's some really great commissions here, too. The Human Rights Commission's a great one. I love the Advisory Board of Health. That has been, it sounds, it sounds tall, but we do some really, really great, cool things. And you really see how the inner city and how we're actually trying to make all our residents healthy. And you'd be surprised how much we really do, that people don't even have an idea about how much checks we do for people, how much we let vaccinations happen for free for some people, reduce cost. How we're out there in the community with the wellness programs. How we're looking at disasters, much like with our police and fire, working hand-in-hand with them. So it's, you know, and the CERT folks. So that's really cool. So I, I would hope that some people would like that. The Arts Commission, too. They're doing some unique and wonderful things down at the farmer's market on, on every other Saturday when the farmer's market's open. There's lots of neat things coming around. And they have a wonderful brochure that EDINA is even sought after on our art walk for our sculptures around our town. So there's some things that we do so well that other cities, cities wanna rob 'em. And so I love that. So please, you can go online, and you can get an application that way. Or if, if you, if you don't prefer that or don't have that access, you can come down to City Hall, and they'll have information on each of the commissions. And you can grab a commission form then and sign up. And the interviews that we just talked about, they're just preliminary. It's a couple of minutes for each person. And we just wanna know who you are, and to put a face to a name. So if there's an opening, there's a likelihood that you might get appointed. So I hope that you'll think about serving your city. We'd all love to see you, and see more of you serving your city. So, please, go ahead.
Well, we just got our cards thrown at desk, so I was gonna mention that our emails are gonna change. And we got city email addresses. Is that also gonna be on the, when we see the scan on TV, will they reflect our correct emails on that? So just a heads up, if you've been emailing us, we have a city email address now, which'll make it more efficient, so I don't have to sort out all the ads from everything else on my other emails, so.
Are you gonna take all our ads away? I hope. So, that'd be nice. That would be nice. Council, I'd ask the council approval of the agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. The consent calendar, City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. For those in the audience, the consent calendar contains several separate items, typically routine items, that are acted upon by the city council in one motion. And once the consent calendar has been approved, all the items and the recommended actions will also have been approved, and no further action on those items would be necessary. Tonight, there are only two items on the consent calendar. Item one is consideration of the approval of a resolution accepting a grant from the Target Corporation, the amount of $4,400, and donations from Modern Manufacturing and Engineering Incorporated for $750, the Richfield Police Federation $150, Martin Costello, who's the city prosecutor, $300, and Lee Salon Thai of Counselor Realty $150, for the Richfield Police Department Heroes and Helpers Program. And item B is consideration of the approval of the bid minutes tabulation and award of contract Graymont LLC Company for the purchase of Quick Lime for the water treatment plant in the amount of $216,000, $216,790 for 2014. And that concludes the consent calendar.
I'll move the calendar.
I'll second. Any discussion? That lime's what makes that water nice and soft, right?
Yes, it does. May I say one thing? Heroes and Helpers Program, that's the continuation, or the renaming of a program that was Shop with a Cop, wasn't it?
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
You know, and it's probably not as descriptive as with the Hero and Helpers as it was with Shop with a Cop. But what it is, and it's a really cool program. The money gets donated, and then police officers will go and shop. There, there'll be a select, people selected. And I think it's probably around 10 families, something like that, where they, they would be selected, and the officer would shop with them for, for Christmas gift kind of thing. It's, it's so cool. And it's all, you know, it's wrapped up here at City, their packages are wrapped and stuff. And I don't know, Tom, the, did you ever participate back in the day when you were on the?
No, it, it actually didn't start till after I left, which I regretted.
Yeah. I could see, I could have seen you doing that.
Yeah. We, we had something that we did before with, on our own, but nothing, this is a great program.
It's a great program.
And it makes the cops look great in the kids' eyes. Many times, we go to those calls, and we're the bad guy, 'cause mom and dad may have a domestic situation and that. We look like the bad guy. This is a time where we can get to the, you know, young'uns, and they look at us as a good guy.
Yeah.
And they order, they order pizza. And, and then they have some community members come and help them wrap the gifts.
That's right. Exactly. Right.
And you know, it's so nice, we get so many great donations, too, from the community. That's very, very nice. It speaks, it speaks well, and it gets right down to the heart of our community, right, in, right in Richfield. So. Okay, all in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Consent calendar passes. Councilmember Garcia?
Where are we? Eight?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, this is the second reading of an ordinance amending public parking requirements for restaurants serving minimal alcohol that are located within shopping centers. The city staff continually monitors and notes the areas of the zoning code that may require review. And I think they do a good job of that, 'cause they're always hearing from constituents and from the council. Parking requirements have been and will likely continue to be pesky, annoying, irritating. In other words, they're really challenging regulatory items. And the city works to find a balance that allows for thriving commercial areas in close proximity to single-family neighborhoods. The staff will continue to evaluate parking requirements for, for various users, but proposes this initial change related to restaurants located within shopping centers. Shopping centers require 3.5 to 4 parking spaces per 1,000 square feet of floor area, depending on the total size of the shopping center. Parking requirements for restaurants within the shopping centers is calculated at the same rate unless the shopping center is under 20,000 square feet, the restaurant serves alcohol, or has waitstaff, the total restaurant has a drive-through, or total restaurant square footage exceeds 25% of the shopping center. If any of these conditions apply, parking for the restaurant is calculated separately at the same higher rate as standalone restaurants. The proposed ordinance changes address, addresses the issue of alcohol service as a trigger for higher parking requirements. And I don't know if Mr. Stark wants to add more to that?
No, I would just say that, you know, in the past, when you would think about alcohol at restaurants, in decades past, that was kind of a sit-down restaurant, you know, with waitstaff and things like that, that require more parking. They don't have as high, as fast of turnover. You know, in the last 10 or, or so years, fast casual restaurants have really come to the surface, places like Panera or, or Chipotle. And as an example, Panera does sell beer and wine. When Panera came in, we asked them, you know, what percentage of their sales was beer or wine? And they said, really, it's just about 1% or 2%. Nobody comes into a, noodles, did I say Panera? I'm sorry. Nobody comes into a noodles just to sit there and, and kick back some beers, you know? And so, really, we didn't see a reason that they should be treated differently. A noodles in a shopping center where they have alcohol versus a noodles that doesn't serve alcohol. We didn't really see why they should be treated differently in terms of parking requirements. So that's why we're bringing this to you.
That's a good example.
So I will move that we approve the attached ordinance amending subsection 544.13 subdivision six related to parking requirements for restaurants within shopping centers.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Tom, you have the next one.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is also a second reading in a summary publication of an ordinance 541.19, amending noise attenuation requirements for new residential construction in the 2007 60 to 62 and 63-year greater DNL. When they mention that 2007, that's actually the airport track of the noise that they had in 2007, when we had the consent decree. City staff continually monitors and notes areas of the zoning code that may require review. Staff has identified deficiencies in the city's airport noise attenuation standards. The proposed changes will clarify existing standards in an effort to improve compliance. The proposed ordinance will continue to recommend that homeowners who are remodeling or adding to existing homes consider noise mitigation measures, but will not require such measures. Mitigation measures are not meant to be a deterrent to investment in existing homes. For new residential construction, it is much easier to incorporate the noise attenuation measures. The requirement for noise attenuation are the same as originally written, only the language has changed. The ordinance will continue to require the following new single-family and multifamily construction. Again, back to the 2007 contours, a 63-plus or greater DNL contour shall utilize building materials with a sound transmission class, also known as STC, rating of at least 40, and shall include insulation of, installation of central air conditioning, mechanical ventilation through the habitable area of the structure. And the 2007 60 to 62 DNL contours must include the installation of central air conditioning and mechanical ventilation through the habitable areas of the structure. The proposed language will be easier for homeowners and builders to interpret and apply to construction projects. Additionally, the purpose of proposed ordinance will incorporate a map to more clearly indicate which categories apply to specific homes. I don't know if John wanted to add anything to it, but like I stated earlier, with the noise oversight, we're telling people, the planes are gonna fly there, build your homes accordingly. So then I'll go ahead and make the motion that we approve the attached amended ordinance 541.19, amending noise attenuation requirements for new residential construction in the 2007 60 to 62 and 63 or greater DNL contours, and approve the attached resolution authorizing summary publication of ordinance 541.19, noise attenuation.
I'll second. Any other comments? I think this is needed. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Councilmember Pat Elliott?
Thank you, Your Honor. This item calls for the consideration of a resolution approving a subdivision waiver, which would allow the division of 7215 Logan Avenue, a 150, 50-foot wide lot into three 55, 50-foot wide lots for the construction of new single-family homes. Ender's Custom Homes has entered into a purchase agreement with the owner of 7215 Logan Avenue. Ender's Custom Home seeks to divide the existing 150-foot wide lot into three 50-foot wide lots and construct new single-family homes. The existing house, garage, and driveway would be need, would need to be removed. 7215 Logan Avenue is currently owned by the estate of Isabel Ducats. The existing home was built in 1937, according to Hennepin County property tax records. The current 150-foot wide lot was created in 1992, when the city council approved a final plat of the property. The previously unplatted property was a 225-foot lot, of which the north 75 feet was split off and sold in 1992. Ender's Custom Homes is seeking to purchase the property and divide the 150-foot lot into three 50-foot lots for the construction of new single-family homes. The three proposed lots meet all the minimum width and depth requirements. However, the area of each of the three parcels will be 17 square feet short of the minimum requirement of 6,700 square feet. This is the result of the lots having a depth of 133.67 feet rather than 134 feet. City code allows the council to vary or modify such requirements, so that the subdivider is allowed to develop his property in a reasonable manner, but in such a manner that the public welfare and interests of the city and surrounding area are protected. While this particular block and the blocks immediately adjacent are composed of 75-foot wide lots, there are numerous 50-foot wide lots located to the east and north. A context map has been included allowing residential lot widths in the, showing residential lot widths in the surrounding area. Some of the policy, policy considerations that we've been provided with include a recitation from subsection 500.05 subdivision two, where it states, "In cases in which compliance with the city's plating requirements result in unnecessary hardship, and when failure to comply with said requirements does not interfere with the purpose and intent of the regulations, the council may," and I emphasize "may," "adopt a resolution authorizing a waiver from the subdivision requirements." Subsection 500.21 says, "Whenever a tract is to be subdivided or platted is of such unusual size or shape, or is surrounded by such development or unusual conditions that the strict application of the requirements contained in this section would result in a substantial hardship or injustice, the council may," once again, I emphasize, "may," "vary or modify such requirements." Additionally, it goes on to state that by dividing the required minimum lot area of 6,700 square feet by the minimum lot width of 50 feet, the result is a lot depth of 134 square feet. As the proposed lots measure 133.67 feet, merely, that's staff's words, not mine, merely rounding up allows them to meet the requirements. Legal considerations that came into play, and one that I find particularly relevant, given the amount of information and communication that some of the neighbors have had with us, is the fact that although not legally required, notice of this request has been sent to properties within 350 feet of the property. And I think by waiving the requirement and making that notice, we, we became aware of a lot of information, a lot of the feelings of the neighbors, that I think are totally relevant. And so I'm really happy that we chose to, to mail that notice out. So we got the information that we needed to address this properly and take the, the citizens into consideration. With that being said, I know that we have a significant number of people that want to speak. And I don't see Mr. Ender's here, but he is certainly, he has an opportunity to speak also. And anticipation of the discussion, everything, at this time, I will move to approve the attached resolution granting a subdivision waiver for 7215 Logan, Logan Avenue, subject to the discussion that I'm sure is gonna follow.
Okay. A second? So we can move forward? No second? I guess we're going to discussion, then. First of all, I'd like to give the opportunity, since we decided to have public comment, for those who put in, and I'll read them in the order of which I have them. I would ask that if you come up, please keep your comments to approximately three minutes. I have a, I have a timer. I'll ask you to wrap up. Please don't repeat what everybody else has been saying, but let us know what your concerns are. And it's best if you just speak in your own voice. So you come up, and you, you state your name and your address. And before you leave, please sign in. So the first one I have here is Nan. Nan, are you here? Would you please come forward? Thank you. Thank you for coming tonight.
Hello. Good evening. And...
Your name?
My name is Nan Rowan. I'm a resident at 7220 Logan. Can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
I am directly across Logan Avenue. I am directly across Logan Avenue from 7215. I have lived at this address with my husband, who is now deceased. I've lived at this location for almost 38 years. Isabel Ducots was a very, very good friend of mine, and I know that she valued the neighborhood, and she, I believe, would not like the fact that three new houses are going to be built on her land. I do not like the fact that there will be three houses directly across the street from me. I don't like the idea of looking at three garages crammed into 150 feet of land. I don't like the thought of additional cars, traffic, parking, noise, and the like. Guess I'll sit down.
Okay, please sign in.
Thank you.
Please sign in. Before you leave, there's a signature board, why don't you just hand it to her? Next, I have Penny Gibson. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. I'm Penny Gibson, I live at 7226 Logan Avenue, so I as well am across the street. I feel like we're here tonight because this is really a case of greed, and I think it's the worst case of greed because it's at the expense of others, being me and my neighbors. For us, I think it's more equality of life for us. We like our block. When people come to my house, they say, "What a beautiful neighborhood you have," and we do. We'd like to preserve that. We don't want to be on top of each other. We all get along. We really, you start putting people on top of each other, it's stressful. It's not manageable, and it doesn't build a good neighborhood. And I would like to ask that you help us keep the community and neighborhood that we have. It's our life. Thank you.
Thank you. Please sign in. Next, we have Ray Kimmel.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Ray Kimmel, I live at 7214 Logan Avenue South. I also live directly across from the proposed development. As the neighbor said, I'm very concerned kind of way the whole thing has been proceeded and been presented to us as a neighborhood. Living across from there, we've had, you know, gas company contractors walking on our property, marking up our property for this development, coming all days, weekends, really not announcing themselves. I'm very concerned if this does move forward, either a three- or two-house lot, what that does to the neighborhood from a safety perspective. You know, it's already a pain now, you know, they're doing plumbing now last week, and we couldn't get out of our garage or out of our driveway because they're blocking the street. Talked about greed, does seem like greed. Talked about the quality of life. As Councilmember Pat Elliott said, some of the homes do have 50-foot lots. Doesn't mean necessarily this is the right thing in this area. Most of the homes are 75 feet. I don't think sticking three homes in there really does the neighborhood any good. I'm one of the younger ones in the neighborhood, I've lived in Richfield since 2009. I do have a one-year-old. The neighborhood is turning over, we have young children there, and that's something I'm also concerned about too, is I want a neighborhood where our kids are free to play in their yard. I don't want the extra construction. I don't want, I'm very concerned too, what these values, these homes are going to be, how they're going to affect us. What is the value going to be? Are we going to get renters in there? I've lived next to renters before. Some renters are great, but what kind of clientele are we going to bring into Richfield? The effect in the neighborhood? That's my also concern I have too, and just like I said earlier, it's the presentation of how it was kind of perceived to us. It seems kind of cavalier right now to me, this is kind of gunhole. I mean, we did get the announcement, but right now, they're moving forward as this thing's a done deal, and I hope that the council here hears some of the neighbors' concerns and maybe puts a stop to this, or just slows this down a little bit and make sure we get all the facts out there. So that's all I have. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Joe Stradich.
Madam Mayor and council, my name is Joe Stradig. Myself and my family reside at 7200 Logan Avenue South on the corner. We are kitty-corner from the proposed development. My wife and I and family have lived at 7200 for 23 years, and like other residents, we love the neighborhood. We value the way the neighborhood looks, the way, how safe it is, and we look forward to living there many, many years in the future. We do have concerns regarding the waiver to subdivide 7215 into three lots. We view it as a negative to our quality of life on the block. We view it as a negative to the livability on our block. And like other residents have said briefly, we see increased traffic as a safety issue. We see increased parking on the street, and we see an increased number of residents living in a limited amount of space. The lots and houses are totally out of character. The proposed lots and houses are totally out of character with the existing homes on our block. We believe the ambiance of the neighborhood would be destroyed because of the cramped houses on the block. We also believe that the three-lot proposal is simply a corporate greed with disregard to the residents of the city of Richfield. Thank you.
Next, we have Judith Stoker.
My name is Judith Stoker. I live at 7308 Logan Avenue South, just down the street. My husband and I have lived there for 28 years. Both our children went through the Richfield schools, those heartens. I wrote a letter to the city council, I hope that you've all read it, so I'm not going to repeat anything I sent you in the email. I just want to say that I hope you've taken a look at the map that was prepared by the community development and notice how much, how many green rectangles there are, which I think is very indicative of how we feel about our neighborhood. All of those green rectangles indicate that those lots are 66 to 75 feet wide. The surrounding 12 blocks have lots that wide. In the 30 surrounding blocks, there are only three 50-foot wide lots. I know that the developer says there are numerous 50-foot wide lots. They are all further north of 70th, they are further east of Highway 35, they are further west of Hen, and they are further south of 76. I did exclude the four lots in the cul-de-sac because those are irregularly shaped lots. So I just brought a visual. My visual is I taped together what the houses are going to look like when they're right next to each other. I white it out all the trees because most of the trees will be gone. I went over there and counted over 33. I know what my lot line is next to my neighbors. It's three feet from my driveway to my neighbor's lot line. That's a doorway. That's a doorway. And these lots, these houses are going to be very close together. I'm happy that we're upgrading the housing in Richfield, but I believe that two lots is more than sufficient for this subdivision. Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks for coming. Don't forget to sign in. Rod Henry.
Ron.
Ron, excuse me, it says Rod. Yeah, Rod. That's wrong.
I want to thank you all for this opportunity to speak to you all, and thank my neighbors for covering pretty much everything I had written down to speak about. I've put together a petition, I haven't heard anybody, any word on that. I mailed that to you folks. I don't know if there's a way to get that into the record or not. I've brought copies of the actual originals, and I've gotten more even as I arrived here today. Got over 90 signatures of people that are all opposed to having it made into three 50-foot lots. One of the things I don't believe they spoke to that I would like to address is the specific items in the staff report. I won't quote the items, but in regards to subdividing the property in what they call a reasonable manner, developing this land in a reasonable manner would be making two conforming 75-foot lots. It is not reasonable to expect a variance to three 50-foot lots when no other lots on the street are 50 feet, and the public welfare and interest of the surrounding area are not protected by putting three homes in a substandard lot. And they've already spoken about three, the numerous 50-foot lots, which are not in the area. And as for a substantial hardship, because I'm not being able to do this, I feel it is disingenuous to claim substantial hardship for a developer who buys land that is ideally configured to be subdivided into 75 feet, and then immediately claim hardship if they cannot get a variance. The history of the neighborhood should never be compromised for the sole purpose of profit of recent fire without consideration of those who have lived here for generations. And let me clarify, my name's Rod Henry. I live at 7233 Logan, and I'm 75 feet away from that division. Lived there growing up. I bought the home from my parents in 2005, and I plan to live the rest of my life. So I ask, and I beg of you to deny this waiver allowing what is a standard double lot to be turned into three substandard lots. Please do not let the greed of a developer or a family who inherited this land without, no cost to them, change the historic fabric of the neighborhood by exceeding the density, which will increase the number of people, as people have said, the vehicles, the on-street parking, and traffic in this quiet neighborhood, while also decreasing the site yard setback and green space. All of this, we believe, is going to negatively impact not only the deep-rooted character of our neighborhood, but negatively impact the value of our existing home. In closing, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity once again, and thank for your service in the community, and hope you go do the right thing.
Thank you.
Can I turn this in to anybody?
You can give that to Cheryl. Across the way. There were some people had some hands up, this is for public comment, okay? And you have a card. I'll take you with the card first, and then the woman in the brown, in the black shirt. Thank you, I'll read your name, and then you can come up. Thank you. This is Sarah Barnett. Barnett. Okay, sorry. Barnett. Please state your name and your address.
My name is Sarah Barnett. I live at 7227 Logan, and we are the property that is immediately south of 7215. And I hope that the perspective I can bring is the younger people moving into this community, because as someone already mentioned, it is turning over. We have four new babies on the block. And we've moved in in 2011, and actually, our realtor owns a home that's in sight of this block as well. It's the northeast corner of 72nd and Logan. And when he saw there was a house for sale on the same block, he said we had to buy it, which I think speaks to the fact that anyone who has lived here loves the community. And it's quiet, and my husband and I grew up in Edina, and we're not moving back. It's just the perfect location, the perfect community, and I think that to allow substandard plots in this location in Richfield where there aren't 50-foot lots bordered by the four major streets would significantly change the fabric of what makes that community so strong. I'd like to read one sentence from the mission statement from the developer's website. He says, "We admire and respect the amazing century-old craftsmanship of Minneapolis and St. Paul neighborhoods, and thus build homes that are aesthetically pleasing, period, and complimentary to the existing craftsmanship in the neighborhood." And I guess I would implore you and the developer to abide by that and to not only consider the craftsmanship and the build of the home, but also the community and the homes, you know, around it. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. Okay.
I live at 7233 Morgan Avenue.
You need to be in that mic so we get you recorded.
And we are a new family into the neighborhood. We bought into this area, into this neighborhood because of the larger lots. We did not want to be surrounded by homes. We wanted a place for our kids to grow and to run around and have a yard. And I have a problem with this for a few reasons. One is I think we're opening Pandora's Box. By, once we smallen lot sizes, and then later we want to make other lot sizes smaller, and people can point to this past here, "Why can't it pass somewhere else? It's only a foot shorter on this side, or two feet here." And it's just going to make it easier for developers to come in and point to this as an example of us shortening our lot size so they can have a bigger profit. If they're looking at the profits, they can build two decent-sized houses and still making a reasonable amount of profit, and not shorten the lots, and not ruin the aesthetics of the neighborhood, and why people are coming to this community. Because we don't want to be trampled over each other. We want yards and not live in the suburbs and have houses on top of houses. And so I think by attracting new families, we need to keep our lot sizes large so they can have families that grow in Richfield and not come and go like they have been in the past. Thanks.
Next, who else had their hand up? Does somebody else have their hand up who wanted to speak? Please come forward.
Hi, I'm Sue Nielsen, and I live at 7201 Morgan. And we have been in the neighborhood for 23 years also. And one of the things that drew us to Richfield to begin with was the size of the homes and that there was space to grow, to have our house grow as our family grew. And I think by putting three little houses, sorry, three little houses in a close area like that, families don't have the ability to add on to the home, and so they'd be leaving. And we want to have a way to keep people here in Richfield and make it so it works. And by having these snout houses, where it's the snout in front, we end up with less green space, and it's not as welcoming in the neighborhood also. So I think having three houses is too close together in that area.
Is there somebody else who would like to make a public comment? Councilmember Elliott?
I would suggest that we see if Mrs. Ender's... And I apologize if I'm pronouncing your name wrong. Do you want to come up and talk about your...
Hello, I'm Terry Burns. I'm executor of the property that's being sold, 7215 Logan. And I appreciate these neighbors having concerns about dividing this lot into three lots. When I listed the house for sale, I was concerned myself when I heard about three lots. But I've drove around the Richfield neighborhood and found a lot of 50-foot lots. They have some nice homes on them, and there's a lot of older homes in that area. Now, Logan, yes, it has 75-foot lots, but these 50-foot lots, what's being proposed, are very nice homes. They're not so outlandish that they're going to, what I would call, ruin the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And the increase in value of their homes will go up substantially by these nice homes that are being proposed to be built. I understand the fact that when you think about three lots going in there, that it's going to disrupt the neighborhood. I don't see that happening. The building of the houses during construction time is going to be the same for two houses, or three houses, or one house there. They're going to come in there and make a disruption for a short period of time. After these houses would be finished, the way they're being proposed today, I think they're going to have a positive impact on that neighborhood. They're going to increase the value of these homes, and that's what I was looking for when I was trying to sell this property. Now, Isabel had known this property was going to be, her house was going to be demolished, and I don't know that she's ever talked about whether it would be three lots or two lots, but when they bought this property back in the 1940s, their intent was is they bought a lot of land there, and they split that property up, and that was their investment. I think the house that they, the lots that they've sold in the past, they put up some pretty nice-looking homes in there. And these houses are going to be a... And these houses are going to be a positive influence on this neighborhood. And I hope that the council at least gives the opportunity to let this happen.
Thank you, please sign in.
You want me to sign in?
Yes, please, appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Who else is here? Is there another speaker?
Yeah, they will. They're just getting acued up.
Yeah.
Okay, my name is Dustin Enders. I'm the owner of Enders Custom Homes, looking to build these three homes at seventy-two fifteen Logan Avenue South. First off, I might start off with is the greed kept being repeated here. I'd like to know who of you know me? How do you know how I think? Have any of you been on my website to read what I do and read what I'm about? And the homes that I've built, and my dedication to building energy-efficient homes and good homes, quality homes? So it's just very hurtful when people sit there and say that, and they have no idea what they're talking about. Completely knee-jerk reaction. It, it, that's all I heard out of all of these discussions, with all due respect. I don't need comments, please. It, it seems to be that there is just a lot of selfish point of views here about the past and what's going to happen when we're building these homes, and how it's going to impact you. But once the homes are there and, and built, and there's families living in there, families who want to live in Richfield, who value green homes, who value a new home and the quality of a new home, and to try and take that away from more families just because six, seven people don't like it, you're, you're two ten-thousandths of a percentage of the population of City of Richfield. So there's not many people. As far as the size of the lots, if I can refer to a property that the City of Richfield split at sixty-eight twelve Fourteenth Avenue South, one of the properties of which we're building a home on for a customer. A hundred-foot-wide property that was thirteen thousand square feet in size was split into two. This was a hundred-foot-wide property, and it was split into two fifty-foot-wide properties. Directly across the street, there are eighty-five-foot-wide properties that have a square footage of eighteen thousand square feet. The properties that the City of Richfield split are six thousand six hundred fifty-seven square feet. They are almost three times smaller than the properties directly across the street. The City of Richfield created two fifty-foot-wide lots, which are now the smallest lot on the block, both in square footage and in lot width on the front edge of the street. So to say that seventeen feet under the requirement is something we should be concerned about, I think is, is not something we should be, should be concerned about, simply because it obviously has been approved in the past to go under that threshold a little bit. As far as saying how close the buildings are going to be, we have a survey. We've presented a survey of the proposed builds. We've done everything to the T to make sure the city was on the same page of us, with us, of what we were looking to do. We chose homes that are narrow design, so that we are not up against the side yard setback. So for the ladies' home that is three feet off of the property line, your home is encroaching on the side yard setback of five feet. Our homes will be eight feet off the property line and more. Some are ten. So to say that we're going to squash homes in there is ridiculous. We're keeping homes nicely fit on the block. We're caring about the character of the homes. To the point of character, these homes have, these homes have character. Post-war homes don't have a lot of character. They were throwing up homes to get people into homes after the war. They don't have a lot of character to them, unlike in the nineteen hundreds, early nineteen hundreds. You go to Minneapolis when they're just starting to thrive, and they're just gorgeous home. Absolutely gorgeous craftsmanship. And it's, it's no disrespect to the people that own the homes in, in Richfield that are post-war homes. It was just that that was what the time brought. And that's what, that's what the economy called for, the community called for. They needed homes, they needed them up quick, and they needed them inexpensive.
Can you wrap up?
Well, I guess when everybody had all this time to kind of throw their things together.
Yeah, but we're the individuals to have three minutes.
I understand that, but there was a lot.
I've given you more, I've given you, you're on your past five minutes.
So, the reason that some work has been started was because it was just street work because of the winter conditions. We didn't do anything that concerned a lot split. We were simply updating the sewer and water stubs in the street so that we didn't have to tear up the street in the middle of winter and then have a, an ugly patch there for the whole winter. So we were doing our best to respect the neighborhood and respect the community.
And I need to ask you to wrap it up.
Okay. And if we were to just do two homes, the cost would be unattainable. We'd have to, we'd have to obviously raise the price of the homes to cover the cost of the additional cost of the lot. Otherwise, we would have to lower the quality of the home. People are looking for four, three beds. They're looking for around two thousand square feet, two-story home. We're giving the buyers in the market what they're looking for. And so you, we have a track record of the homes that we've built in Richfield, Minneapolis, all over, where people like what we do. We have, we always sell our homes right away to good families.
Okay, can you, you need to, you need to, you need to sign out.
So I appreciate your time.
Thank you for coming. Okay.
Couple things, Your Honor, if I may.
Sure.
We get presented with the materials that we addressed this evening on Thursday. I opened my packet on Friday and reviewed it and looked at the proposal for seventy-two fifteen. I live on Sixty-seventh and Oliver. I, I go down Logan all the time, going to Donaldson, riding bikes, going around, everything else. I'm, I'm, you know, seventy-two fifteen, I didn't know the address. I was familiar with the property, I was familiar with the house, and I was familiar with, with the, the size of the lot. And without even driving by it, my first thought is, three houses are too many on that piece of property. But I went out Saturday morning and drove by just to confirm that I, I had the right picture in my mind, and absolutely had no problems if the proposal called for two seventy-five-foot lots, which actually Scott Sharp, who lives in my neighborhood, did with a hundred-and-fifty-foot lot in my neighborhood. He didn't try to put three houses on it. It's unfortunate, perhaps the choice of words, attributing greed to the developer, just like he attributed selfishness to you. I think either choice is totally inappropriate in the situation we're here in, the discussion we're having. And, and I don't think we want to, to visit that or go any further with it. I'm also disconcerted a little bit. Mr. Enders characterizing post-war homes in Richfield as thrown up just so people had a place to live. I find that terribly offensive. I've got a house that was built in nineteen twenty-three, and I sincerely doubt you could build a house today that, that would match the craftsmanship and the quality of the house I live in that was built in Richfield in nineteen twenty-three. So to, to cast dispersions on the housing stock we've got here in an attempt to, to sell the quality and the craftsmanship of your homes isn't a very strong selling point. And, excuse me, you spoke, it's my turn, all right? And, and I know that you've built some houses, and I was going to make the comment that, that I attribute quality to your home, and I think you're a good builder. I think what you're trying to do here is not going to work. And when you say that, that the people that have spoke here tonight and the people that live in that neighborhood are one percent of the population of Richfield, they're sixty percent of the population of that neighborhood, and that's what counts. They're the ones that are living there. They're the ones that are going to be neighbors to the people that move into the houses you're building. And I just assume they move in there, they're welcomed as neighbors and, and cohabitants in that neighborhood. Every neighborhood has its own subset, has its own feel, and has its own harmony within the neighborhood itself. And, and I'm suggesting to you that, that regardless of what the rest of the council members do, if this passes and you put three houses there and three people in it, there's going to be a transition that's going to be real difficult for those new neighbors. It will come, because this is Richfield and, and we're good people. But, but why, why jam something in with the neighbors don't want? I, I'm going to tell you that, that you come back and you want to do two seventy-five-foot lots, I got no problems with it. I'm not, I'm not going to vote for, for three fifty-foot lots on that lot. So that's just, that's, that's me speaking. Everybody else is going to have their own voice and their own vote.
I, I wanted to make just, I wanted to ask a point of precedent-setting on, on the legal side of things. Because in my tenure, we have divided one lot into two fifty lots. We've not divided a lot into three separate fifty-foot. And is there a precedence? Is there? And these are, it is a bit of an irregular, even though if you round it, it doesn't. But I mean, what kind of precedence are we setting? And I have concern about that, too.
I, I think the point is, it says may, it doesn't say have to. And just because we can do it.
Well, I know, but I just want to ask that, because the.
Let me just put it this way, because I, I don't, from the legal standpoint, I'm sure that Mary's going to give it to us. But my point is, just because we can do it, doesn't mean we have to do it.
I know, but I just also want to know what recourse could happen if we choose to make a different decision.
And Mayor, if I may, I got a point to ask her. We don't have a second, so where are we in this discussion?
I can just remove it. I mean, I can move it again and ask for a second. If it's not there, it doesn't, it doesn't go anywhere.
Then it doesn't go anywhere.
Okay, Madam Mayor, Council. I try to address one thing at a time here. First of all, to the Mayor's point regarding precedent, you know, I think that each, each matter is reviewed on its own merits, and each application and situation is going to have its own factual situation that the, that the council will need to review. So I think that, I don't know the past applications or situations that were brought up earlier as to whether those are identical or not to this particular situation.
Not, not that I know of.
So, e- each, each application is, is reviewed on its own merits. So I think that's, that's what the council needs to keep in mind. Procedurally, any council member can just remove or make another motion to go forward.
I expect to once the discussion is complete.
Okay. Councilmember Edwina, you had a question.
Well, I just wanted to say to the developer and, and the executor, you know, they had every opportunity to also contact us or write us a letter or whatever. But I appreciate these folks who went door-to-door and signed a petition and had the discussion with their neighbors. That's who they should have the discussion with. They looked at the city, they knew this was coming up tonight. They looked at the packet. They had problems with it. They wrote, they wrote emails. They called. I went to, to Mr. Hendry's home. He took the day off today. And I went to his home, and we got in my, in my car and drove to the lot in the back. You know, I always do that whenever there's an issue like this, because you can't, you can't decide on paper, and you can't decide on the pretty pictures or anything like that. You actually have to see the physical area. And it would really violate the character of that neighborhood. And I, I just would not be able to support it, because I think it's, you know, Richfield is the way we make it. And, and if it violates that, then it's not worth putting three lots on there. Two lot, two, two houses, I think, is, would be beautiful.
Councilmember, sorry.
Well, I'm real tempted to make the motion here the other way so that we can really go with it.
Well, and just let me comment, I did drive by, too, and I'm sure, we probably all did, because that's just the kind of council we have here. And I've talked to a couple of you, too, and, and thank you, thank you for your comments and emails and stuff. And this is hard, because Hendry's homes are actually really nice-looking. I really like your homes here, and you've come before us before and talked about them, and we love them very much. I, I do agree with Councilmember Elliott and Garcia that this is probably not a three-house parcel. I, I could support, because we love move-up housing. We really do. I could support something for two houses there, and maybe you need to go back to the drawing board. You're very clever and very creative. I bet you could come up with something that would sell there very, very nicely. And we could probably be very happy with it, and the neighbors as well.
And I'll, I guess I'll add to my comments. It comes down to, I live in one of your war homes, and the lots, the lots that are in my neighborhood, you know, are varied a little bit. I live in a seventy-foot lot. But it all comes down to, if I lived in that neighborhood, what would I do? Because that's what we have to do up here. I did drive by it, and if you, I sat and looked at it, walked it off, and I said, I wouldn't put three homes there. I put two homes there. So it's, what would I do, and what, what, how would I feel as the neighbors? So that's, you know, like Mr. Elliott, or, or Councilmember Elliott said, if there was two homes there, we probably wouldn't be beating here, because we're not looking for a variance. And I, and the variance is a good catch-all for us. Lucky it came under that, otherwise if you had enough, you could fit it in there. Was it six more feet? I think you could have made it, we wouldn't be visiting this. But it's fortunate that the city did its diligence by notifying the neighbors. I'm glad we did it. We learned our lesson before about that. And I'm glad the neighbors showed up. And it's really coming down to what is our value in Richfield, or what is the actual thing about Richfield? We call it the urban hometown, not the downtown downtown, you know, or urban downtown town. So I don't want it to look like row houses. I want to keep the neighborhoods vibrant, have yards. And I was trying to think, you know, with all my toys, I wouldn't be able to get my boat in the backyard with these, so. So that was kind of the final tipping decision, so.
Councilmember, do you want to make a motion, or may I?
I will make a motion. This time, I will move to deny the approved, or deny the attached resolution granting a subdivision waiver for seventy-two fifteen Logan Avenue.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Thank you. No, please don't, please don't, please don't. That's not appropriate. Please, thank you. But thank you for coming. We do appreciate that. City Manager, you have a report?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of the council. The only thing I'm, I'm bringing up in City, in City Manager Report is that we are moving ahead and are very close to electronic agenda. And so our, my goal is to have, is to have that operational in the month of January of two thousand and fourteen. We're working toward it. The, the configuration up there is going to, is going to change slightly. And for the first couple of times we run it, it'll, I'll run it with redundancy, so you have a paper packet and, and electronic. I think you'll find that the way we're, we spent a lot of time on it. There's been a committee that includes Cheryl and Teresa Shima, the deputy city clerk, and Sally Morton, and Pam Dematrinkle, and Lucas Johnson. And maybe I'm missing somebody, I don't know, Cheryl, but those folks have worked really hard on it, and looking at all the different ways to do this. And I think we've, we've come up with some, with a really good way. And we'll do a training session. There'll be a training session for everybody, so everybody will know exactly how, how it's going to work. I think in the end, it's going to end up saving us a lot of time and money, because we're not going to be delivering packets on Thursday, and that takes a lot of CSO time. And there's a lot of things CSOs could be doing besides delivering packets.
I can leave my dogs out, right?
And you, and they don't have to be afraid of your dogs anymore. Deathly afraid. The big dog. But anyway, so, it's coming, and, in January, and I hope you all embrace it.
I, I'm assuming that it'll come to our newfound email addresses?
You know, exactly how we do that is, is kind of interesting. We just talked about it today. I want a mechanism to be sure that while it's going to be on the web, the, all the, the agenda materials, I think it's still paramount that, that you as council members receive the information before the general public does. There's nothing worse than you getting a phone call because you haven't had the opportunity to see something that someone else has already seen. So I'm going to have to find a way to do that, and we're, we're exploring that, so that there would be the information put out there that only you have access to for.
Oh, a restricted portal of some sort for a period of time.
For a period of time. So you, you'll be notified when it goes out, and you can take a look at everything. So you would have a chance to see everything before the general public. And that's, we're still kind of ironing that out.
A Dropbox of some sort, or some.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So, and to City Manager, I'll need just a little assistance, because I have my new email, and I need to keep that separated, so I'll need to figure out how to get into a city portal. And so when does this take effect?
Oh, right now.
No, you should have gotten the letter.
I got the letter, but yeah, I don't want to add it to my other email.
Okay. Well, I'll get somebody to, somebody much more technically. Okay. Well, I'll get somebody to, somebody much more technically efficient than me. I'm, I'm the last person you want to ask that to. I'd have to ask you for advice.
If I may, what do you mean by, I mean, I?
I, I use my iPhone and everything like this, but if anything happens to that, then they will delete all my emails, and I have work emails.
That's why I chose not to put it on my iPhone.
So I'm not going to put it on my iPhone or my, but I'm, I travel a lot, and I need to get into a portal to get the.
Because I've just got it on my, my office server.
Yeah, but anything happens, but anything that gets lost, anything, any of my.
I've done it web-based, and it works pretty good. So if you actually set up a webpage with your password on it, you just click on it, and it'll bring it up. So I've done the web-based one, which works well.
That's what I need to do.
So that won't, you won't attack my phone if I lose it, which I've done before.
So yeah, I need to do web-based, so get somebody to help me with that, and I'll be fine.
Glad to see I'm not the only tech-illiterate here.
You're, you're also talking one level above my head right now.
No, I know what you're talking about. I've done that before, too. I just need to know how to get it all set up. I figure it is. Okay. All right, thank you. Claims and payroll?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed. See, no further items. I call the meeting adjourned. Thank you. It was a great meeting. Thanks, everyone.